We're good?
Okay.
Can I go ahead? Enter. Okay. Thank you.
We're gonna need someone to open the meeting. So between the three of you, one of you can just... If y'all don't want to vote on whoever wants to be boss right now, that would be great.
Better vote.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:00. Town of Indian Trail Developers Workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Moise. We have tonight Mr. Scott Bayer, if I said it right, and Eagle's Engineering, the consultant. And they're gonna go before us to present the Evoque at Indian Trail. I know, John, you're familiar with how we do the workshop. Simply, you present before council, QA, and we take any comments. And we'll give you the comments back in the next few days, maybe by Monday, just to make sure we captured all of them. And then what I'd like to say is, we, planning and engineering and myself, we met with the developer and engineering firm, and we exchanged some info. So we ended up where we're at right now. It's all yours. Scott, John? Thank you.
Oh, that was nice. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Get my specs on. Good evening. My name is Scott Bayer. I'm with Multifamily USA out of Charlotte. I'm here this evening to propose a best... Propose a new best-in-class multifamily apartment complex adjacent to the Sun Valley Shopping Center. It is our group's goal to deliver a high-quality, high amenity-rich complex that will serve the Village Center overlay with connectivity to the shopping center, as well as quickly-accessible walkways to retail and restaurants next to the property. We would like to work together with the planning board to bring an urban, flat-roofed, 320-unit project named the Evoque at Indian Trail into reality, utilizing top-quality materials, fixtures to bring out, once again, best-in-class development. We want to promote residences in a safe environment to live, work, and play, and we ask for your So if it'd be okay, I'm just gonna go through the slideshow. So the first slide, as you can see, we plan on having a beautiful exterior with multiple materials: stone, hardy board, hardy plank, brick. We intend to use flat roofs and yielding an urban feel. So we can go to the next one? All right. So how do I do it? Okay. Got it. Okay. So this is our proposed clubhouse. We are budgeting extensive amounts of money for interior design, thereby giving residents a feel for the highest-quality lifestyle, with a business center, game room, conference room, and a spacious health club. This is a three-story rendering as well, but our goal is to go four stories. I'm in the planning stages right now, and I'm not able to get that four-story exactly in front of you. But we intend to do four stories similar with this type of exterior, and all buildings will have elevators. So this is the site. As you can see, it's adjacent to the shopping center. Twenty-one acres. I'm in contract on the property right now. I've had a stream delineation done on the property. The Corps of Engineers is planning on coming out in August to examine. There's a stream on the GIS, but they're not locating it as they went out there. So we're gonna... We're going to get the Corps out there to verify that there's no specific wetlands other than in the front. There's a little bit. So this is just a shot of going from the clubhouse to the pool, just a transitional area, just to show what that type of quality might look like as we're developing the site. So we are in the Village Center, and I'm just going to read the intent of the Village Center is to create a sustainable community by locating commercial and retail uses that would be supported by approximately 3,000 to 4,000 people, residents, within a close proximity to residential uses. The Village Center is based on an estimated number of people needed to support an elementary school or neighborhood stores. Village centers will also be the most suitable location for higher density and multifamily residential uses so that their residents can be within walking distance of commercial and civic uses. This is coming from your comprehensive plan, so that's... I'm just stating what I pulled out of the plan. So I'm hoping that, being that we're next to the shopping center and we're in the Village Center, that would be a complimentary situation for the town. So here we have the proposed widening of Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. We have a traffic circle at Bethel Road to the right side of the property, and then there's another circle to the left at the shopping center. We're right in between, and we're assuming that those circles will be regulatory of traffic, helping to minimize traffic in the area. And we are planning on doing a traffic study to make sure that there's no negative consequences in the development. And here is a depiction of a four-story building that our architect has built in another location. Ours would have the exterior as in the first pages, with the stone and the hardy plank. But this is a four-story elevator building, similar to what could be presented on the site. Flat roofs, urban, and really geared up towards servicing that specific area with Publix and Harris Teeter and so forth. So we're trying to beautify the neighborhood, and we will be removing trailers on the site. So just wanted to let you know that we are doing our best to beautify and to bring the, you know, area up as high as we possibly can. And this is our preliminary site plan. Our architect will be working with Eagle Engineering, John Ross here, to create a layout with fewer, larger buildings, allowing us to redesign the site with more green space and less buildings on the north side, on the top side there. We understand that might not be the most aesthetically pleasing to the town, but we want to work with that and with the architect, come up with a plan to make the site as aesthetically pleasing as possible, with more green space and walkways. So... And as you can see, there's a connectivity to the shopping center. We're hoping that we can work that out so whereby residents can just walk directly across to the shopping center. And I think that's a goal with the, you know, the neighborhood situation there. So, John, is there anything you wanted to add to that at all?
Good evening. John Ross with Eagle Engineering. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate you taking time this evening to allow us to speak. So yes, the goal for pedestrian connectivity, I think, is one of the target goals of the Village Center overlay. And that is, in fact, the uses that are in Sun Valley Commons, in the shops at Hanfield Village, within the Harris Teeter community across the street, all then become accessible to residents of what we propose as being 320 additional units. Our hope is that we can gain permission to do connectivity. As shown on this plan, there's a sidewalk, almost a boardwalk feel for what's there now against the water-quality pond within Sun Valley Commons. And our goal would be to gain permission from the Sun Valley Commons developer team and owners to provide that pedestrian connectivity there as well.
And then also, there's a roadway that we're proposing on the lower side of the site. That will be... enable access to parcels in the back. Chris Azar is happy with this. I spoke to him on the phone. He owns the property in the back. He said to me that just let the planning know that I am definitely in favor of this. And he's being able to gain access to his property by us doing this development. So just want to let you know that. And just the configuration of units: one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. It's possible we might do a few studios. My architect says that in Charlotte, studios are just like super-hot right now. So... But at this moment, where the configuration would be 117 one-bedrooms, 158 twos, and 45 three-bedrooms, the square footages, and then the monthly rents, which are in line with what's going on in the area: $1,150 for a one-bedroom, $1,450 for a two-bedroom, and $1,750 for a three-bedroom. And just... This is... These are... The next three views are going to be larger. These are larger. This is a large one-bedroom, open space. These are popular. You walk in, the island in the middle. All bedrooms have... Obviously have windows. We have balconies. This is top-notch. I mean, we are going in trying to have the best-in-class here. So this is the one-bedroom. This is 783 feet. Two-bedroom, walking into the open spaces, large closets, two baths, two sinks. And then the three-bedroom, 1,364 square feet. Once again, walking into the open area, just that open feel, which is popular now. And all bedrooms are a nice size, and there are two baths in here. And just a little map, just showing us where we are in relation to Charlotte and 74 and the bypass, just so you can see. And we want to put a gorgeous pool in, saltwater pool, with a grilling area and comfortable seating. So this is a vision we have. It's just we have to have amazing amenities because we want to be the number one in Indian Trail. And then interiors, no expense spared. We are doing granite, beautiful flooring. Cabinetry is gonna be just out-of-sight, gorgeous. This is a model. And so just to let you know that we plan on putting in high-end fixtures, and it's just gonna be like when they see it, it's just gonna be wow. Health club, high-end fitness equipment, high-tech self-workout, so you can actually go out and go in there anytime and do your own workout on the computer. Peloton-type situations where you're joining via Wi-Fi, different things of that nature, but high-end fitness center in the facility. These are other deals we've constructed and own, just these mostly in the Triad area. So, you know, these are constructed already and with Multifamily USA. These are other construction that Watts Leaf out of Charlotte, my architect. Charlie Watts was trying to be here today, but he couldn't be here till 7:00. So anyways, these are other flat roof, generally flat roof architecture that he's done in the Charlotte area, and I'll be working intensely with Charlie to make sure that the highest... This will have the highest quality. So that's about it. So in conclusion, I'm really excited about the project. I value any comments. I really appreciate you all listening to me. It's really, you know, I do appreciate that. I want to work with the town any way I can. Anything we need to do to meet your goals, 100%, I'm just flexible. But I just wanted to hopefully gain your support for the project, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions? Patrick, you have any closing statement?
I yield to council first, if they have any.
Okay. Patrick, it's you now.
Okay. Michael, have any?
Watts Leaf, you said that's in Charlotte?
Yes, they are.
Whereabouts?
I think they're on... I think it's like... I can find out, but it's right there on the... It's on the west side of town. It's on... Do you know the number?
McDowell.
McDowell. They're on McDowell. I mean, they're pretty... Very good for them.
And the ones before that are where?
The... Where are the properties? So one is in Greensboro and two are in Evan.
And I saw by your area code, you must be out of Greensboro area?
Yeah, I used to live there. I've been in Charlotte for three years now.
Okay.
Do you live in Indian Trail?
I'm sorry?
Do you live in Indian Trail?
I actually live uptown.
Okay.
But I love Indian Trail.
I'm concerned about the four stories.
Okay.
That's a big concern because of our fire trucks, and sometime they can't reach that high.
Sure.
That's gonna put a burden on the different areas that have a fire department.
Okay.
Would you be willing to put some money towards the building of a new fire department or a truck if they need it?
I'd be willing to look at anything that you're asking me for, so just... I'm willing to look at it all.
Okay.
So I'm not gonna say no to anything at the moment, so...
And the other thing is the three-bedroom.
Yes.
That means kids and...
Potentially, yes. There might be a need for that. So, you know, you're... You don't love that. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it overcries the schools, and then as taxpayers, we have to build new schools.
Gotcha.
Part of the circle.
Gotcha. Yeah. I mean, I'm flexible. I'm just trying to accommodate the needs of the town, but I am flexible completely.
They are very nice apartments, by the way.
Thank you so much.
Mary?
Patrick, presently, what is our highest PUD in town?
The highest what, sir?
PUD.
We have to look that up.
Is... Because this one comes in at 15. Does that sound on the high end or the low end?
I have to look it up.
Okay. So why apartments?
Why apartments?
Mm-hmm.
It's what I do. And I feel like there's a need. I like being on the side of a shopping center like that. And, you know, I'm trying to do a good service for the town, try to put a nice product in there that, you know, if there's a need for that, that's why I'm doing it.
This is... You said it was 21 acres?
Correct.
320 units?
Correct.
How many mobile homes are there now?
I think like maybe six.
Six, but there was probably 20 in its heyday-ish?
That I can't answer. That I can't answer, probably. She's been adding... I mean, according to the broker, she's been adding on the parcels in the back for the past 30 years, so I really am not sure about what the distant past was.
Okay. You mentioned that there is a stream, but what I was really concerned about was the access to the Stone Theaters property there.
Yeah.
You said that you were hoping to work that out. What does that mean?
That means if the town had any influence because of the center that I'm in, I would like to get involved and pay for that access to the shopping center if there was a way to do that. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I think connectivity is important in the Village Center. So I'm just open to that. I'm open to trying to make that happen and talking to Mr. Moser or whoever's involved, you know, to make it happen. And if it can't happen, it's out of my control, but I would do everything to make... To try to have connectivity.
So let's say that the other party's not agreeable to this shared access.
Yeah, yeah.
How would you recommend, if this project approves, that those people access that property now in lieu of, you know, vehicles?
The only choice, I would say, is to have sidewalks, and they'd have to go around. I don't... So that's... I'm not really sure of any other method other than to have some type of an easement or something of that nature, but whereby it's beneficial for the owner of the shopping center to have our residents utilize their restaurants and as a selling point and a leasing point for them to have 400 people that can access their restaurants, their shopping, all of their retail, I think would be a great point for Mr. Moser to have that accessibility. But surely it's totally his decision. I mean, I'm... They would... My residents would have to go around, either in a car, or they would have to walk on a sidewalk. That's the only thing I can suggest.
You mentioned the Wesley Chapel Stouts corridor?
Yes.
It being widened. Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong. Was that pushed out past 2029?
This is... There's a possibility that it could be on the P6 program.
In P6?
And as far as I know, it was on P5 before, but it was delayed. The segment that was on P5 was from Independence to Monroe because of the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not on the radar screen right now. But what DRMP provided in the study and the four-lane and the roundabouts, they were all approved. So if they're gonna build that projects, that's the product that you're gonna see out there.
Marcus?
Mr. Moise, if I may...
Yes, sir.
...address that. So yes, we recognize that there is an intent at some point in time for Wesley Chapel Stouts to be widened. What we would do is accommodate and dedicate right away as would be desired for that so that it wouldn't have to be something that would be condemned or purchased in the future for that connectivity. We recognize there's a traffic impact analysis to be done that would be independent of that. But the good news is, the vision for this Village Center overlay is that there is a roundabout at Bethel Lane, which obviously brings this into the heart of that Village Center overlay. And the road section actually changes north of Bethel Lane from what it is between Bethel and Monroe Road.
The... Thank you. A little bit of immediate feedback is, it's a lot of apartments right there.
Okay.
Lot of concrete. Heard the... In the beginning, you said that this has already been addressed, so that there's another layout, maybe? Is that what I'm hearing, or did...
Well, I mean, I just... I want to work with my architect to try to... I think there was a comment about the... How it was going across the back, single level like that. And we definitely want to address that. And so my architect, in my last meeting, said, yes, we can definitely work on the shapes of the buildings to enhance the look of the site. This is preliminary, just to come in to you and just see, you know, get your feedback.
320 units, 450 parking. What is our standard for apartments?
This does not... What's shown on this plan is 670 parking spaces. It was a typo on the previous slide. So yes, we do recognize that your standards are higher than that, the one-and-a-half or a one-bedroom, two-for-two, two-and-a-half for three, plus resident parking. We recognize that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So that being said, in a subsequent presentation, that will be addressed in terms of the parking?
Yes, sir.
All right. Second, well, just one more point. I'm looking out at the street. I see the street at the bottom that you have there. My concern is for people wanting to turn left. That's... And I guess you guys are probably gonna address that based on your traffic study and how you plan to mitigate that, right?
Yes, that is correct. The location of that would be worked out with the scoping document that would come through the town and will go to DOT, so that the traffic impact analysis would study that interchange, and I'm sure several around that.
So I guess I'll have to wait and see, depending on what you come back with, to kind of dive into that a little bit. If I'm not mistaken, from one of the presentations that you... One of the slides that you had, you had a sort of a turn around about not too far from that point?
That's actually, yes, the town's vision for the ultimate... I'm sorry, I'm going the wrong way. Here we go. So that is, I guess, Patrick, I don't want to put words in your mouth. This was DRMP's vision for the future Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. So those roundabouts were locations that they've identified for the future.
During their conceptual design, they have to do traffic analysis based on the intersecting avenues, and that product that you see in there is what they recommend and they analyze and they're proposing to do. So this is a consultant firm proposing that before DOT and the town.
All right.
Any other questions? Patrick?
Yes.
I'd just like to mention that currently it's a mobile site home. I think what the developer is proposing on doing, if I'm not mistaken, it's all septic tanks right now, correct? I don't think there is any gravity or sewer force main. So I think what the developer is proposing is to provide... Put the pump station out there to handle all the sewer, which is no pump stations, exeter there. And then also, they're gonna run it through the Azar property, and that also could serve any properties that are in the back that they do not have sewer, correct? So the easement has been secured through the Azar properties. And that's the connection that you see at the left low corner, at their lower corner? That's right. Thank you, Adam. So... And I think if anything to happen in the future, it's... I'm not sure how many acres, John, is the Azar?
There's probably 40 acres.
Forty acres.
Or that this opens up a basin that's not currently served for wastewater.
Right. And if they ever come in to develop it, it's gonna be a single family. It's not gonna be any multifamily, correct? So that pump station and the sewer force main will provide sewer connection to this multifamily and Azar. The second item, we did exchange, Scott, as I remember, that we would like to see a cluster form of the apartment. And you did mention that that grid system right there, definitely we're not in favor of. So we'll be looking forward to, you know, provide the next layout for that, especially like if you double parking lots right there on the right-hand side. That is not very attractive at the beginning of the apartment. So I think we did exchange that comment with you guys through the planning department. And also, part of the property is impacted by the floodplain, so I think you're waiting on the result from the Corps to let you know what areas can be used and what cannot.
Excuse me, Patrick? Patrick, it's almost... It's 6:30.
Okay. I'll make it fast. If Bethel Lane, will you... If you... If this project is approved, will Bethel Lane be approved like permanent pavement and curb and gutter and all that? I mean, that would be the interest to your apartment, your multifamily. Yes, this is just a question. I'm not advocating. I'm not sure if you want to do...
I think that would make sense, Patrick, certainly from the intersection to back to Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. We'd have to look at the...
Right.
You know, the... Where we have property frontage, that would make perfect sense to do a curb-gutter sidewalk improvement there.
Okay. And, uh, one of the last items is the TIA. If that single family to, to occur in the back, it wouldn't be a bad idea to include whatever single family dwelling in the back into this TIA unless it's not going to be developed for a while.
Yeah. And we have no idea what, what the long-term plan, there is no plan that we know of as of yet for, for the Azar property. We do recognize that, you know, this, this doesn't connect through to the Sagecroft development, but that, this opens up a portion of that development from a single family.
Good.
Wastewater perspective. But we're not, we're not aware of what Mr. Azar has, has in his market.
Last item, last item. I just, uh, Mike and I, we shared the, the graphs for the percentage for multifamily, single family and all that. We're going to update that. But just to let you know right now, in that entire area, that's the only multi-family we have besides the town home at Sagecroft. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Can you, can you repeat that? I didn't quite hear it all. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Right now, this is the only multifamily that proposed in this village. We have not seen anything from the Haney family development. The only, the closest one to this one will be on Monroe Road, which is the town homes where Sagecroft is at. I just want to make council aware that that's the only multifamily within this village.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you all for your time. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Council, do you need a couple minutes? If we could have everyone's attention, please. Thank you. If everyone could please quiet down and please place your cell phones on silent. If you have to take a call, please step outside. This time, I'd like to call the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for July ninth, two thousand and nineteen to order. If everyone please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silence. Everyone may be seated. This time, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Yes?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make an addition, please.
Yes.
Seven, uh, let's make it F. Approval to change the board of adjustment meeting time to six thirty from six P M.
Okay. Everyone okay with that? Any other changes? No, at this time, I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
So moved.
Ms. McIntyre has made the motion. All in favor. That would be unanimous. For the record, Mayor Potem Cone could not make it tonight. Brings us to presentations. Uh, first up would be a new business recognition for, uh, Purnay Boutique. Ms. Pamela, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, if you take the microphone and give us a minute or so overview of your business and where you're located.
Okay. My name is Pamela Shinto. I'm a owner of a small business across the Indian Trail Route, one oh seven. Uh, first of all, I want to thank everybody for being here today. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here to present my business. So, originally, let me talk a little bit about myself. Originally, I'm from Africa, but I've lived in the United Kingdom for a very long time. That's where I actually went to school. So, my business, Purnay Boutique, I deal with children clothing, both boys and girls. I have like pretty dresses for girls from ages two to fourteen, and I have suit for little boys from ages one to fourteen. Then I have jewelries. I have shoes. And I have like body shapers for women, like with us women, like something to top in our stomach, to put on nice dresses. So, that's basically what I do. So, it's a new business. I opened it on the fourth of June. So, the business has been around just for two months. So, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. So, let me present my business card.
Uh-huh.
Where this is? Is this in the, uh?
Oh, on the other side?
Yeah, on the other side, Johnny. Marcus, thank you. While you're up. We'd like to present you with this plaque, Welcome You to Town.
Oh, thank you very, very much.
We wish you many years of success. I'll just do an overview. Okay. Thank you.
Do I have to pass it in my own?
If you, if you wish, you can have people come up and get them. Yes. Our next presentation's for citizen of the quarter, for second quarter. I saw you in here, Keith. Rise. Be recognized. I'd like to introduce everyone to Keith Adams. He is the president, creator of Common Heart. Citizen of the quarter is far beneath the bar you've raised for you. Um, there's a whole book here to read about Common Heart, but Keith, we'd love for you to come up and, speak from the heart for a minute and give your minute, unless you want me to read this.
I can talk. I, I have no problem talking.
I'll give you a minute. Go ahead, Keith. Tell us about Common Heart.
Well, um, Common Heart, thirteen years ago, um, it was basically the hearts, well, fourteen, fifteen years ago, it was basically the hearts of two women, two local women who would run into folks with a need for groceries. And they would just do what we would do. We help people out. You know, if you have a heart towards your neighbor, uh, you're going to want to help folks out. And so, that's what they did. Along came, um, and one of those wom, one of those women was my wife, Deb, um, who's a driving force of what we do. And then it was joined later on about thirteen years ago by two men, me and my friend, Harry Walden. Can you stand for Harry? Say hello. The four of us were the four friends who started Common Heart. And it was all birthed out of this idea that relationships change people. And we didn't understand that the fact that us reaching out across socioeconomic boundaries and meeting people who had a need for gro, for groceries would affect us so much. And it has. It opened our hearts of love and compassion for our neighbors and our friends. And we started inviting other people to join us. Currently, we have about five hundred regular monthly volunteers who are reaching out throughout the community. About, about seventy-five of them actually deliver groceries to about three hundred, uh, about three hundred families each month. We operate fi, six other food-based pantries or outreaches in the community, uh, reaching a total of about thirty-five percent of all food insecure people in our county, uh, starting headquartered here in, in Indian Trail. Um, we have some new opportunities coming up where we hope to reach out further than that. But, you know, helping folks with a need for groceries is not the end of it because meeting people and understanding their struggles, understanding what they go through, being able to afford housing, being able to keep, keep paying their rent and other things and utilities, um, on one, two, three potential jobs, just struggling and still not having enough for basic needs, helps us to realize that there is more that we can do and how we can reach out if we're going to truly love our neighbor. And so, we ended up, uh, beginning to work with folks to help them get out of poverty, to, um, to, uh, develop a set of skills and, and things that many of us already know. Folks in middle class know the hidden rules of how to succeed oftentimes, maybe not perfectly, but we know, have some idea of how to do that. Folks in poverty, because they are moving on this survival-based reality of their life, they have a different set of rules. And so, we, uh, we've been working with folks to help them move out of poverty and to marry them, marry them is probably too strong of the word, match them with folks from middle class to serve as allies, to help folks develop a stability for their family, that their children can grow and move out of poverty, addressing one of the key needs here in our community of upward mobility. It causes me to think, for instance, um, about the policies that the board, that the town council has, for instance, relating to housing, as might have been just demonstrated by the meeting we were just at, um, where we don't consider the fact that our community is becoming a community that is going to move, where new families, uh, starting out families will not be able to afford to live here, uh, where the vibrancy of, of youth will be done away with. Instead, we are moving towards a community that simply is catering to the rich. And I really would like to encourage the council to consider affordable housing in decisions relating to such things as multifamily housing. I'd like to consider, also encourage you to consider the businesses in our community that struggle because of, because of variety of code things that makes a, makes a difference to us. We struggle amongst those things ourselves in our, in our, uh, with our thrift store in downtown and looking to changes that are going to take place that are going to impact us, uh, that may even make it so many of the businesses in downtown community are not able to continue while we wait for the beautiful changes that are going to take place. And so, there are many concerns that I have and want to bring to you as well. But I would do want to say thank you very much. Uh, Jerry, I know, thank you for naming me. I know Michael very well, and I know other folks here as well, and Patrick and stuff. And I do need to mention, because otherwise I owe a dollar for each person and a thing, that, um, I'm part of Union West Rotary, um, and we, uh, do a variety of community events here as well. And so, being a member of the Rotary, I want to encourage you guys to join us in our meetings on Thursday mornings here in this facility at seven thirty and visit us as we make a difference in our community. Thank you very much for being a part, uh, and giving me this award.
I saw her back there making mention them. She had, she had that smile on her face. Well, Keith, it's my honor to be the one to present this to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done for our community and all you continue to do. You know, I'm always at your service.
Thank you. Thank you. I do want to also say, and I know I'm, I'm just going, yeah, blathering in the mouth, and that's fine. But the reality of this is that this, uh, citizen of the, of the court doesn't really belong to me. It belongs to all the volunteers and their staff members. Excuse me. It actually makes a difference. It's about people helping people. It's not about organizations. It's not about governments. It's, although they all have their part, what really it is, is about people caring for other people. And that's what our volunteers do throughout every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. That brings it to open public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act with reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as the speakers to, to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing the grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect our town employees' right to a fair hearing on your grievance. As I call your name, once you state your name, your three minutes will begin. Mr. Barry Hollander?
Good evening. My name's Barry Hollander, uh, one oh three four Fountain Brook. Uh, I've, uh, this is, by the way, this is a tough act to follow. Beautiful little girl, down the park. This is a tough act to follow here. Uh, I, I've moved down here to, to Charlotte. I look for a, an opportunity to find a, a great suburb. I think I found one in Indian Trail. I've been down here about a year and a half. I've just started, uh, I've joined the HOA in Brandon Oaks, uh, and I've become, uh, accepted the chairmanship of the Traffic and Safety Committee. Uh, I have about forty years' experience in supply chain, working for, uh, world-class companies. And I thought I could use some of that expertise to, you know, help the Brandon Oaks community, um, you know, have improvements in their, uh, traffic and safety. Uh, initially, I've met some with the Sheriff's Department. I've, I've met some with, uh, already with the Public Works Department, the Engineering Department. Um, so, I'm trying to look, look at it as a process. What, what opportunities are there for, for processes? One of the things I, I've learned from, uh, one of the consultants that, uh, you know, used to work in our industry was everything is a process. There's not really, you know, any bad people. It's processes that we need to fix. And that's what I'm here to discuss today, is I think there's an opportunity to review a process as far as parking. There's been a lot of complaints. I've sent an email out as far as parking. If I look at, at a process, you know, we have individuals that are new coming into Brandon Oaks, individuals that have left, lived there for a, a long time. I've tried to look into what, what is the parking in, in Brandon Oaks? I, I've looked at, on the website. It's very hard to, to find what we have there. Um, and although what I eventually did find by links is about, uh, it's, uh, forty-seven pages that we, that's on the website. There's an ordinance that's, uh, about, uh, I think, seven pages, eleven pages. And there's thir, and, and addendum separately, um, of thirty-six pages. Uh, where I, where I came from, from, uh, in Pittsburgh, uh, it was a leading suburb, about a similar size, about thirty, thirty thousand. Uh, you're looking to build and be a world-class sub, suburb, just like it, we have in Indian Trail. They have a, a four-page document. One of the things that I've found is, uh, that, uh, most of the documents make sense, but, but the residents aren't taking time to, to review it, look at the document. It's confusing. I think there's opportunities to review the process. You know, what is the process? You know, how can we communicate that process? Can we, uh, narrow it down? Is there opportunities to improve that process? Uh, one of the things.
Mr. Hollander, your three minutes are up.
All right. So, what I'd like to do is, is, uh, you know, I, I think, I see this as an opportunity. Everything that I've heard here and I've read a lot of the meeting minutes, you're looking for opportunities to improve the town, improve for the residents. And that's what I'm here, as Representative Brandon Oaks, uh, to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amanda Falkenberry?
Good evening, Council. My name's Amanda Falkenberry. On June eleventh, I stood before you and spoke about being unable to find any record of the May eighteenth budget workshop. So, I went and looked at the open meetings law, GS one forty-three dash three one eight dot ten. In addition, I contacted a North Carolina open government expert to help me with the open meetings law. According to the law and the expert, the budget workshop is considered an official meeting, and the town is required to keep full and accurate minutes. This may be in the form of a video or sound recording. As of today, I still cannot find any record of the May eighteenth budget meeting, and my request for this information remains unanswered. So, I asked the government expert, what else could I do to get the information? The government expert gave me several suggestions. I started working through those. As a result, I have submitted a P I R through the town's website requesting the information again so that it is an official request to the town instead of just an email that can be ignored. Thank you.
Counsel, any comments?
Yeah, um, I would like to.
Okay, Jerry.
And really, I'm, I've, um, I've been speaking with Mr. Hollander, or is he, uh, and, um, regarding the parking situation out there in. situation out there in Brandon Oaks. And so I was aware of, he was going to come tonight, and I asked Patrick if he could queue up some things to have a more of an in-depth discussion. So I would like to use my public comments-
Your three minutes?
Yes.
But you didn't sign up.
I know.
Go ahead, Jerry. We're timing you.
I'm speaking, Jerry.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Don't mind?
Okay. Who's using, oh, Patrick speaking?
Yes, no problem.
All right, three minutes, Patrick.
All right. We worked very closely with Union County Sheriff's Office approximately for about three, four months to put an ordinance together. In addition to that, we have the ordinance, and we went one step extra is by having a presentation to make it easy on people when they look, so they could identify what they're violating or not. Adam, if you could go through that. If you look on the screen right there, we try to locate every condition that exists within town and describe at the bottom where you are violating. So a lot of people really, when they looked at the presentation and the ordinance, we received a lot of emails complimenting what we've done in regard to coming up after all, you know, with, with something that could regulate the on-street parking. Now what we do is, we did put the document, the two documents together. It's just sometimes residents don't go through the trouble, really, to go to the website and look for it, but we rely heavily on Union County Sheriff's Office. They're out there, you got about 25 to 30 cars every day, but there are always a unique situation out there that you cannot cover in a process, because different streets, different driveways, whatever. So this is when we communicate good enforcement with Union County Sheriff's Office to make sure that we don't go out there and, and put a note or give somebody a violation unless it's covered under this ordinance. So I do agree with you. I, I think, you know, we should be covering every situations out there, but sometimes it's impossible. In addition to that, a lot of streets within our town, they're owned by South, North Carolina DOT, and sometimes some, some HOA, they have some kind of, is it covenants? Some of them they have covenants, some of them they don't. So we also rely on HOA to help us out, to make sure that we could accomplish the on-street parking ordinance. And I'm only just, for a minute, Captain Chase, would you like to, you know, add, add to that?
If it'll work. So just to catch everybody up a little bit, in 2007, I started trying to get the town to revise the parking ordinance. That was a couple of days ago, and it took a little while, but we finally got a council and got, you know, staff and everybody that finally got a vested interest in it. But we too, and I have especially seen how the town has grown, being a lifelong resident of county, seeing how it's grown from being pasture land to now we've got houses and neighborhoods. But honestly, I've told Patrick this 100 times, there's no way that we can put every particular parking incident onto a document or piece of paper. If we did, it'd be 9,995 pages long. What we do rely upon is citizen input. Call us, call and report it to the Town Hall, or call 911, and we'll come out there. We, I will not, and we won't respond to emailed pictures of cars parked somewhere, because by the time somebody takes the picture, emails it to me, and then I check the email, and then I send somebody out there, I go out there myself, most likely it's already been moved to a different spot. So it's a waste of my resources to try to respond via email to parking complaints. It's just as simple to pick up the phone and call if somebody has a parking complaint and call us. For HOAs, what we tell people is, if people are calling and complaining to the HOA board or to the management company about a parking complaint that's covered under this, then certainly refer them to us. Don't take on that responsibility of trying to handle it through the HOA, because normally what I get is a phone call or an email from a management company three days, four days after the original email, because you can see it on the thread, saying, hey, can you go out and check on this car? Well, no, I'm not going to drive all the way over there, because the car's most likely gone. And somebody can pick up the phone and call me and meet me, I need a complaint, and I need somebody that it is impacting, because before I go to this man's house and say, can you move your pickup truck, I have to be able to say, this lady's having a hard time backing out of her driveway, she can't see, so I need you to move your truck over. It makes a whole lot more sense to him whenever I explain to him, hey, I need you to move your truck, whenever I've got somebody that can show me that they're a true victim to it. And, you know, we've had, this is a culmination of phone calls from UPS drivers, from FedEx drivers, from United States Postal Service. We've got some neighborhoods here in town that years ago, people weren't getting their mail. Their mail was, they didn't have a post office box, but their mail was being held for them at the post office, and they would have to make a weekly trip over there, because they could not get their mail out of their mailbox. So for every person that has a reason why they need to park like that, there's also an impact to 25, 30, 50, 100 other people. So we're trying to find a happy medium. Now, we've said from the get-go, we don't go out hiding in bushes, because I'm not getting beach screen TVs off every 500 parking tickets we write. What we're doing is, we're doing this on a complaint basis only, because we didn't add any additional manpower whenever we adopted this ordinance, although we took on a whole big role of, we'd like to go out and help police your parking. What we did was, is we said, we'll do it on a complaint basis only, and we'll certainly respond out, try to mediate through. A lot of times, we spend knocking on doors, educating people, putting flyers, stickers, pamphlets on cars, trying to get the word out about why it's important to leave the roadway open for service delivery vehicles, ambulances, school buses, fire trucks, things like that, that need to be able to get in and out of our neighborhood. But certainly, my goal was not to write a ticket for every time we had to go out and deal with a car. So if I had to go to Hayden's house and knock on his door and, and we'd log his car in, so that the second, third time I had to go over there, then Hayden will probably get, end up getting a ticket. But the first town ordinance that was adopted in Indian Trail for a parking violation would cost you $218 and a day in the courtroom. That was what the original version years ago was. If I wrote you a parking ticket, you had to take the day off work, go sit in court beside a guy that had a DWI, or somebody with a drug charge on this side, spend all day, burn your vacation day or your comp time, and pay court cost and a fine. And I thought, there's got to be a better, more reasonable way to do this. So now it's a $25 penalty, but it's a civil penalty that can be mailed or paid to the Town Hall. So with all that being said, we are a very diverse community. We have taken in neighborhoods that did not get the benefit of coming before you guys or coming before the planning department to be looked over before they got brought in or while they were being built. So these things are already been established, and then we annexed and took over that area. And then we've got some neighborhoods and some areas to where, like the gentleman came up here this, this afternoon and proposed some ideas to you, and you came back and said, well, you know, parking this and parking that. Y'all have heard me say, we need longer driveways, we need wider streets, things like that, because what our desire is to see able, to see our future developments create a sustainable neighborhood that's going to have a good quality of life for people. Because we've all heard from people that live in some of our neighborhoods, that it's truly hard for them to park their two vehicles in their own driveway without blocking the sidewalk or hanging out in the road, because the driveways are so short. We've seen pictures of it for years up here, so we don't want to duplicate that. We wish that there was one document that could cover all of those scenarios, but I feel like that the document that you have at hand at least gives us some options to be able to go out there and work in between. So we're hoping you have and Patrick do any more work that you want to on this matter.
Thank you, Captain. Well, you know, one of the thoughts that I had on that was, if there was a Reader's Digest version, and I'm not aware of what you hand out, but-
So there is a, there is a pamphlet that gets, if we come by and there's a vehicle that's blocking the roadway, then, you know, we'll stop, code enforcement's got some, they'll stop, stick them on cars, they'll put a placard sometimes on there for visibility. You know, the pamphlets that, that the planning department has is the same ones that our guys are using to put out there. A lot of times, we go knock on doors. It comes down to the common sense of, am I impacting somebody else? And the courtesy of, am I impacting somebody else by where I park my vehicle at? A lot of times, people just don't think through how they might be, or just don't realize how it may could impact another driver, either from a sight distance issue, or thinking about a school bus getting in and turning around, you know, ambulance having to come down into a neighborhood or something. So, you know, to put a Reader's Digest version out there is only going to cover a few of the spots, to where there's so many, that, you know, what I guess my Reader's Digest version would be, park how you want your neighbor to park. You know, and that's one sentence, and it's simple and short and sweet, but, you know, a lot of our, our neighborhoods are not inclined, and I don't think we are, any of us are, with putting signs everywhere. You know, if you put no parking signs everywhere, we really don't need a car parked at. You'd probably, I mean, yeah, it'd just be a mess, and we couldn't keep a sign guy busy enough, but between that and then, you know, curb paintings, you know, we've talked about, and so there's been some curb paintings done, you know, in some of our neighborhoods, and we're progressing toward that in other ones. But, you know, the biggest key to it is, call us, and we'll send Mike Henry over there, one of our deputies, and he'll talk as long as I do, until they move their car. But at the end of the day, education's probably the most, the biggest key to it. So if people will call us, we'll come out and we'll talk it through with people, and, you know, if we can't get any, if we can't get a resolution from education, then we'll write a ticket. I mean, I, you know, I hate to say it, but that's not what our end result, goal is, but our, our goal is to keep that, that roadway clear for school buses, fire trucks, ambulances, things like that. So if that means I've got to write a ticket, then we'll write a ticket. But that's not usually where we start out at. It's usually talking, trying to, trying to work through, because everybody's got a unique situation that they're trying to, trying to deal with.
Is that what you want to accomplish, Jerry?
We got to start. We got to start it.
Okay. Any other comments, counsel? No? Okay. That'll move us to, who, Captain Cobble?
So just a couple of things real quick, since I've already talked for 27 minutes. Some of you might have seen on social media the other day, we had a, we responded to an active shooter call over at the Walmart on Thursday, the 27th, at 4:00 in the afternoon. End result of it being that we ended up with, with a whole lot of people over there at 4:00 on a Thursday afternoon shopping at Walmart. And two gentlemen decided they would meet, they didn't know each other, strangers, and they used an app on the phone to, to find one another, and they decided to meet up, and, and one of them was going to buy a cellphone, and the other one thought he was going to sell it and get some money back. The guy that claimed he was going to buy it decided he wasn't going to pay for it, he was just going to snatch it and run off. And the guy that was selling it thought it'd be a good idea to fire off a bunch of warning shots. How we went through that and did not wind up with a body, or a car, or any other property struck by a bullet out there, I have no idea. But even as of this afternoon, Detective Williams was, was seeking her charges from the magistrate. We waited until we got everybody's side of the story together, and while we might commend one side of it for their, for their actions that appeared more like a Western movie, the other side of it says, you can't do that here in town. That's just not, that's just not the way you can do business. So we're going to end up with criminal charges on both sides of that incident, but like I say, knock on wood, didn't have anybody struck or hit. Luckily, we had a couple of our warrant squad folks that were right here, close by, and Shallow Garner, who's our sergeant over the warrant squad, is also our assistant team commander on the SRT team. He's done a lot of training for the town for active shooter response and stuff. If I'm going anywhere for an active shooter, he's the guy I want with me, and he was about a quarter mile away. So we wound up with 22 deputies that responded to that incident, but we had a huge crime scene, considering the fact that you've got a full Walmart parking lot, and you've got shell casings in different areas, and people loading eggs and groceries, and trying to get in their cars and get going, and, and everything else. So there was a lot of people out there filming us, so if you hear about it, that's what it was, but luckily, knock on wood, nobody was hurt or nobody was dead from it. Fourth of July parade, if you thought it went well, I had something to do with it. If you had any complaints, Josh Rushman landed. He worked with Hayden, I thought it, I thought it went off good. Didn't see any issues from our end this year, but they worked on the traffic and security plan for it, and all in all, I think it was good. We did staff extra deputies working in the community around while we were doing our parade, because as we have seen in years past, sometimes we have things that go on. Unfortunately, our guys did respond to and, and work a death investigation from a female who suffered a gunshot wound during the time of the parade, and, and all appearances right now is it was going to be self-inflicted intentionally, but, you know, certainly we can't close that case until we get the rest of the autopsy results back and things like that. But we were busy outside of the parade while we were busy inside of the parade here in town, so good thing we had extra folks around. So one of you asked earlier about a motorcycle accident on Oldman Railroad. On Saturday afternoon, we did assist the North Carolina Highway Patrol and Stallings Volunteer Fire Department with a motor vehicle collision between a motorcycle and a passenger vehicle. Don't have a whole lot of details, other than the driver of the motorcycle did die as a result of his injuries sustained in that crash. So that was on this past Saturday afternoon or evening, about 9:20. And then two things I just want to bring up for anybody that's listening or anybody here. We've had two recent road construction incidents that are worthy of mentioning. You've heard me up here joke about how we've got a huge population of traffic cones and barrels here in town right now. If they did a census on that, you guys would probably take the, take the trophy for the state in that right now. But with that being said, we're just asking that people pay a little bit of extra attention and slow down whenever they're in these construction zones. These guys are out here working. A lot of times, we have deputies that are out here working, the Highway Patrol has folks that are out here working with the construction folks, you know, with blue lights on, trying to slow the traffic down. Sometimes I think we're just another light blending in that's causing distraction from it, but we did have a tractor and trailer truck driver who fell asleep on the bypass last week in the evening time, and his vehicle veered over to, to the opposing lane, or, you know, lane beside of him that was shut down, and he ran into the back of a crashed truck, one of those trucks that you see, the big barrier on the back of, just designed to take the impact, from a small passenger-style car, not a huge tractor and trailer full of stuff. And so anyway, he hit, he hit the crashed truck and then hit a trooper's car. I had a trooper here working off duty from Gaston County that was working out there on the bypass, flipped his car three times, and how he didn't die in that wreck, I don't know, but to see the car is, is terrible, but he kicked the door open and crawled out with a scratch on his head. And, but we ended up with a worker out there that was grazed by one of the, by the mirrors on the truck as it came to rest, very minor injuries. So knock on wood, everybody was real lucky from that, but that was a huge amount of damage loss out there. And then we also had a worker working for Sealand out here on 74 with the Super Street that was grazed by a car that was a hit-and-run, hit the, hit the worker in the evening time, grazed him, caused very minor, thank you, injuries on that, but fled the scene after that. So just, just stay alert and pay attention, and let these guys get out here and work so we can get these projects done. We realize it's frustrating driving through it, you know, I tell everybody that, but it's like going through surgery, you know, hopefully at the end of it, we're going to have a, have a better, healthier heart from it. So these arteries are just getting cleaned out and redone right now with these road projects, so we just ask for a little bit of patience out here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Captain. That brings us to the consent agenda. There's no questions. I need a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Mr. Morse made the motion to approve. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Motion passes. Brings us to our public hearing. UDO text change, amending chapter 530.020, ordinance number 0190709-315. Mr. Jones? I yield the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. This request is for indoor vehicle sales for ZT 2019-0025. It's a zoning UDO text amendment. The request is to permit the uses by right for light equipment sales and rental, retail in the Light Industrial and the Village Center Overlay District, and light equipment sales and rental wholesale in Light Industrial District, both for indoor sales only, no outdoor sales lots. The applicant is Euro Prestige Imports LLC. The purpose of their request is that they have exclusive car functions already existing in the business park they're in, and they go by appointment only for these exclusive cars, and at times, when they're doing their exclusive car maintenance and their collection management, someone says, I'd like to do a transaction. Or they get contacted, and it's by appointment only. So they want to be able to be approved for an additional use there for car sales, but with nothing on the exterior. It's no drop-in, but the fact that it's in the Light Industrial area that he's in, currently it's not allowed. The planning board voted 7 to 0 to make a favorable recommendation to town council. The table shown above and in your packets shows in red what would actually be added to the Light Industrial and the Village Center Overlay District section in the UDO. It's currently, light equipment sales and rental is available in another section, and just want to add it here for no sales lot, but for Light Industrial and Village Center As, oh, excuse me. So as part of the action, we're asking to make a motion that staff thinks that this is consistent, following the goals, the comprehensive plan. The, in your packet, the- Uh, the, uh, in your packet, the, uh, the goals listed in your packet and in the ordinance are a little bit different from, uh, it's not one, two, four, and five for the land use and housing. It's actually just number one. It will enable diverse uses, avoiding potential land use incompatibilities. So just number one, uh, slide was not, uh, copied too much of the slide there. Uh, for economic development, uh, it's recommended that it will, uh, enable infrastructure investment in the commercial areas of Indian Trail that will help foster economic development initiatives. And the motion is also, as part of the consistency findings, uh, the motion will also be for that this is in the best interest of the public because it will permit, uh, oh, yeah, that's where I copied it from, hotel motel uses. Strike that. That's not part of this. I'm sorry. But in your packets, that will permit the, uh, the uses requested for indoor car sales in the town. Or the amendment is not consistent with the goals.
So can I ask you a quick question? Is the action on the screen correct or is the text, the UDO text changes that we're seeing in our packet correct? Which one should be followed?
I can tell you right here. Let me confirm.
Cause in our packet, I see land use and housing goal number one, by promoting a mix of uses while avoiding possible land use conflicts between neighboring properties.
The one in your packet is correct.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
No, no worries. So you need some action from us?
Yes, yes. If you're in favor, uh, of the consistency findings, and then, uh, do you approve in general?
So before I, I ask that question of, um, what is the planning, what is, um, the planning department's view on this? I know the planning board voted seven to zero. What's your view on this?
Uh, our view is, uh, it's, it's really supporting an existing business or any other businesses that want to enable a little sales desk inside an existing area for sales or rental. Uh, it doesn't impact the exterior, so we're not promoting sales in an industrial area and we're not going to be putting car lots.
All right.
Attracting drive-by customers in a light industrial area. That was our concern as staff. So, uh-
Staff supports it?
Staff supports it, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any, um, discussion, counsel? This time I'll close the, um, council discussion, also close the public comments, since no one has signed up for public comments. Um, so, um, I'll need the first motion to, A, make the motion to... Motion to find a consistency findings as read into record by staff. Correct?
Correct, or as, as contained in your, in the agenda packet, since that's the correct one.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone?
Um, yeah, well, I want to make the motion, but I'm trying to figure out the best way to, to go about saying it and doing it.
Make the motion to-
I'll make the motion to approve the consistency findings for indoor sales in light industrial and village center overlay districts as presented by staff for ZT 2019-0025, um, which also is reflected in the agenda packets that council has.
Very good. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion. All in favor? That would be unanimous. We need a second motion to approve or deny the text amendment or for more information.
I will also make that motion and then back one, one more. Thank you. Make a motion to approve ZT 2019-0025 regarding indoor sales in light industrial and village center overlay districts. Also want to mention that the text is found in, um, the council's packet as well.
Okay. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Motion approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
Brings us to old business, item A, PIRs. Mr. Sadik, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, sir. Just to respond to, uh, some public comments, the questions in regard to the budget retreat recording was responded to in an email. We have made the, the requestor aware that it was at council's discretion not to record that meeting. Item number two, that presentation for the budget retreat was part of the agenda packet for town council dated 5/28/2019. So it's, uh, in our opinion, these two are closed. Third item, we would ask the requestor, which is most of the time the same people, to follow the process of requesting records. If it's a PIR, it needs to be submitted on a form, a hard copy, or do it through the website. We will not respond to an email if they're not following the PIR. Town council has asked me in the past to keep them up to date on large number of PIRs and emails. Recently, we've been bombarded with a large number of them, to the point that this last one cost the staff approximately $1,000. That $1,000 of taxpayers' money, we spent it on responding the last couple of weeks to PIRs from the same individuals. So, uh, we will continue keeping town council up to date and we are not done yet. We do have a large number of, couple of PIRs that, uh, for approximately for six months of information, a lot of them are confidential, that we will not be able to provide. But just to give the requestor an idea, because we can exchange, because the large number of files, we can exchange it among ourselves in order to cover the internal process. So right now, approximately, we, we had about $750 of colored copies and we're not done yet. So, uh, but as we promised council to respond, uh, in regard to information about PIR, if any of you have any question-
I do have a question, Mr. Sadik. Um, not at this point in time and not to burden the staff further, but could we get some information as to who the people are, who are the persons asking for such information? That's one. Um, the reason I'm asking that question is I believe in transparency. This is a town, um, there's residents in the town who need to know what's going on. And if they request information that is reasonably, um, that we are able to provide in a reasonable time, I think the town and its staff should. However, from what you're mentioning, it seems like we have some people who are incessant in their request and it seems that every little thing that happens in the town, they're asking for information, including meetings that they are actively present at. So at the earliest convenience and not to burden the staff further, if we could get some sort of breakdown in terms of who are the, who the requesters are, also if there's some cost that you can probably ascertain by what they're asking for, how long it's going to take the, um, how long it's, how much it's going to cost, right? Cost doesn't necessarily only include, um, paper, also does include time, because if they're doing this, they're also not doing other functions, because it has to be reviewed by multiple departments based on the information being requested. So if we can get some of that information from you, uh, again, I want to stress, this is not something that we're asking to be rushed and put anything aside, but at your earliest convenience, that would be appreciated.
I could respond to your questions right now.
Oh, well then-
Let me go ahead and take a stab at it.
Go ahead, then.
At most of the requests that we had for the last couple of weeks, that kept a large number of employees involved with that is Mr. and Mrs. Fockenberry.
Okay.
And the people that they involved is our new communication officer, myself, our town clerk, also our town attorney, and our, our economic development coordinator too. Uh, so we are keeping up, we are going to provide you with the number of hours of each person, uh, uh, number of hours spent by each, each employee, uh, from each department. And we're going to give you a number of every prints that we're doing in order for to, to exchange it among employees. We have human resources gets a copy of it, our attorney, if we need to, we turn a copy to her too. So we will provide you with a small database that gives you the cost, time, and the number of prints that, uh, involve the, uh, that were involved in the request.
And that, that is a cost to the taxpayers, because it's not a free service, meaning that it, it, there is some cost borne by the taxpayers.
Mr. McIntyre, the biggest cost is we try to be as reasonable as we can and sometimes it's stopping us, making us delay some of our activities, daily activities.
Okay.
And if it gets to a point that it becomes overburden, then we are going to take care of our work first and delay some of those requests.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, I think that we had a resolution that we prepared back in the first quarter of, of the new council, where we, where we, we spelled all this out, so.
Well, a quick question, are you charging yet for any of these PIRs?
When the process involve printouts that we need to exchange among us, we're going to have to. So right now, we have probably, uh, let me turn it to Mr. Evans, please, about probably at least $750 for one request.
This is, this is one PIR that was requested by Fockenberry is that for economic development, this is for a half a year and for six months.
Is that a reasonable request? I would say no. And at some point, this has to be, um, addressed and has to be charged. That right there, it's going to take me about three days to go through those, because a lot of confidentiality involved in that. So I'll have it probably by the end of the week, but I will not have time to do my job.
Um, Ms.-
Of note, just let me add, we do, in, within our own policy, we do charge, um, five cents for a printed copy, 50 cents for a colored copy, and that's in the PIR policy.
Um, Karen, just one question to you. In regards to, I, I, I understand the press, other persons wanting information and should be able to get information that is not confidential. But if, and, and you tell me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but if it seems to be some sort of fishing expedition where, just give me everything you have and I'll try and find the needle in the haystack. I mean, is that productive? Does the law, sunshine law as I'd call it, does it really, um, is that really the intent of the law to just, and, and that's the thing that I'm asking, right? It's, it, it, I, I believe in the public knowing everything that they can know. Certain things are confidential, of course, people's salaries and X and so forth and, and other personal decisions. And certain other things that are in closed session that can't be discussed for confidentiality reasons, new business coming to town, whatever the case is. But is that really the intent or the, 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 the intent of the law?
So the, the law does not permit us to ask someone's motive-
Okay.
-for their, for their request. What our policy does include is a, an attempt to have a conversation with the requestor in an effort to narrow down the scope of their request.
Okay.
Um, when we have luck with that, um, we're able to much better manage the volume and the, um, focus area of production of records. And I think another important note is that the only thing the town is obligated to provide a requestor is an actual public record. The town is not required, nor do they actually create a document. So for example, if somebody sends an email with a list of questions, the town is not obligated to respond to that in a public record request, because that would be creating a new document that doesn't already exist. If there is a document in hand that answers that question, we have, of course, will provide that documentation. The goal, the, the general idea is, in North Carolina, we are a sunshine state. People are entitled to all the public records that we have available. The, in order to find a balance between the cost to the taxpayer and the right to obtain this information, we want, we encourage a conversation that helps narrow the focus of these requests. Oftentimes, people don't understand how broad the request is. You know, they don't, they just, they just do not comprehend that there may be 5,000 emails with something and they're only looking for four. So this conversation's an important component of the process internally.
Um, Mr. Sadik, then, the question that I have for you is, have you made any, or has there been any success in efforts to narrow the scope of the ask that's coming to you? Or is it just, give me everything?
Yeah, oftentimes, many, many requestors, it's, it's easy to get it narrowed down, some not. So it just depends on the people that you're dealing with.
Okay.
But many people oftentimes will very much get to the point of what they're looking for.
All right.
One of the, one of the, the things that we're running into, we provide the information, then another request comes in asking for the time of when we provide the information. And sometimes it's back three, four month and six months and it's just like vicious circle. And, and, uh, you know, we follow what our attorney, uh, suggests and recommends to us, but it's, it's getting to a point that we see no sense of the information, but we'll provide it if we have to. And sometimes we respond by saying, we don't understand the questions or we don't have the information. So we try as much as we can to narrow the information, but, uh, they, like Karen said, they're so broad sometimes. So we won't take a stack of paper, give it to them and let them enjoy reading it. That's all what we can do.
All right.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. That brings us to community meeting protocol, schedule and time. Who's handling that one?
Says these.
Huh? All right. It's these.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. Thank you for your time tonight. Over the last month, planning staff has held 10 community meetings on various projects. This has given our staff a good chance to review and evaluate the strengths and weaknesses of this process. We found that two types of meetings generally occur. The first is the drop-in style. Those generally are ones that, um, very few people attend. There's not a lot of opposition or a lot of interest, um, on that project. The second style is more of a traditional meeting format and occurs when you have a lot of interest and a lot of opposition on a project. And so with this style of meeting, everyone attends at the beginning of the timeframe generally, and the developer presents and fields questions from the audience. Um, we have found that the afternoon meetings from two to four are not very well attended. So we are looking to eliminate this as a requirement in the new, um, draft UDO. We've also created a protocol for the structure of the meetings that are well attended and have large, large opposition. And this is simply an effort to ensure that the residents are able to gain information, get their questions answered in a calm and civil environment. We're looking to modify again this process in the new UDO based on our findings so that we can be the most productive for the citizens of Indian Trail. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Morse?
So are you, are you recommending to decrease the quantity of the community meetings from two to one?
Yes, sir.
I think I would be opposed to that, only because, you know, at least I'm, I understand the two to four PM meeting is not well attended. Um, I wouldn't be able to attend that one either. And it's a, and it's difficult with our traffic to get here in the five to seven PM. Has there been any consideration to possibly, you know, um, I don't know, I'm just thinking out of the, out loud, a Saturday meeting and you have all these developer workshops, you have a nine to 11, 11 to one, one to three, three to five, and people maybe are available to, to come on the weekend versus during the week? Just a thought. I, I just hate that the limited to one community meeting and somebody who really wants to go there, gain information, voice their concerns, are unable to at that point, just because of the timeframe.
Just to add to what Brandy is, uh, we have sometimes two to three employees, or sometimes two from planning and maybe one or two from engineering. And that's, we try, that's a large number of hours for us to attend the meeting where you don't get a lot of attendees. Uh, in regard to Saturdays, I think we've discussed that before, you know, I, I'm not going to make a suggestion or recommendation to have our employees coming in here on Saturday. That's their weekend, you know, they might have to have plans with their families and all that. Uh, you know, I don't mind it, but, uh, I, I can't ask a staff, that's their weekend. And, uh, so, uh, and- And I left that to Brandy to, I tried not to get involved because I wanted her to see as she's been with us for about a month and could evaluate. We could monitor that, continue to monitor that. If we see that we have low attendance from the 2:00 to 4:00, we'll come back to council and say, you know, we're still having some low attendance. And then we'll revisit that if council likes us to do that. But we're noticing that we're not being getting a large number of people from 2:00 to 4:00.
Are we getting historical data like, is there a certain day of the week that it doesn't, you know, say Mondays, nobody will attend, but Tuesdays, you've got high turnout? Is there any data like that that could, we could start harvesting just to?
I think that's an excellent suggestion. We could look at that and see what would be the best day. And if we get most of the, the highest percentage of attendance during that day, I think we come back to council and say, oh, it's successful, I think we're hitting it, that's the right day, Friday, Thursday, whatever. That's a good idea. We could do that too, kind of gauge it and come back to council.
I do agree that the couple of community meetings that I have attended to, there's been some well-run ones, well-attended, just, you know, very. And there have been some that have been more confrontational than needed to be, just from the particular audience. So, anyways, my thoughts.
I think it also depends on the subject too. Depending on, if it's something that the general public is in favor of, then you would find less attendance. Whereas if it's something that has some sort of interest, whether it's some conflict or some concern, you may probably get a higher attendance at a particular time. So, your suggestion is to have the planning staff sort of come back with some data in terms of the 2:00 to 4:00 period and see whether or not it makes sense to sustain that or?
Yeah, that as well as look at the other dates and just see where you're getting a higher turnout and.
Are there particular days that you only have meetings, for instance, no Tuesdays, no Thursdays? Or is it Monday to Friday depending on when we have a council meeting or a planning board meeting or so forth?
So, Councilman McIntyre, we actually schedule the community meetings mostly based on the developer's schedule, when we can get the rooms, that type of thing, but we'll be happy to take a look at the data. I think that's a very, very great suggestion for us and see what days. You know, maybe we can pick a couple of days during the week in case one day doesn't work for them, but we'll take a look at the data and see. And of course, obviously, it is based on, you know, what the project is. And there's nothing to say that in the land development code, if it, you know, we could write it so that it's, you know, suggested to have two and look at based on the projects whether we feel like it warrants two.
Well, what about a possible other solution could be, instead of the 2:00 to 4:00, move it back maybe 5:00 to 6:00 or 5:00 to 7:00 on another day? And you have to win the evening till you get 5:00. Because the thing is, I'm at work at 2:00 from 2:00 to 4:00, so I'm still at work. And let's say I leave the office at 4:00. Being up in Charlotte, it'll take me about an hour to get home, so by the time, you know, the meeting's done by the time I'm even home. And most nights, people may not necessarily take time off from work to make a meeting. So, maybe that's another suggestion would be to move the 2:00 to 4:00 from maybe 5:00 to 7:00 on another day and therefore you still have two meetings. I know it's asking staff to stay late again. I am aware of that. Nobody likes working late, but.
And we're okay with staffing if it warrants it. What we've seen is just it's a large amount of time from staff, especially during the day. That's two hours times three employees. If it warrants it, we're more than welcome to be there and answer questions. Just remember as well, you know, we're here every day, all day long. We have, you know, when we send the notices out, our phone number's on there. We'll take the time to meet with anyone. And then also there is not only the community meetings, but planning board input and city council. So, there's a large, different varying opportunities for citizens to give us their thoughts and feedback.
So, based on that, how soon, based on the fact that it would be good to get some more data, do you see any more meetings coming up soon within July and August to be able to give you a good data set so we could probably review? Sometime, you want to say September would be a good time to revisit this?
That will work. I think that'll give us enough time to cover some meetings.
Would that be fair?
Yes, sir.
That way we can kind of revisit it in September after you've had that time.
One thing I'd like to suggest too is we are in the middle of the UDO review and rewrite and it could, this could be, this could be a great, one thing that we do, we've talked about with, in the past, is having a very simple flowchart so that council and citizens know when you want to build something in Indian Trail, here's the process and make it real clear and easy so everybody can read it. And this would be part of one committee, one community meeting or two, you know, so we can have those discussions with the big, with the full picture in mind.
So, people have a flowchart of it.
Exactly. Just make sure that it's, you know, we're trying to simplify. So, hopefully, this whole UDO rewrite process will give all of us a much better 350, you know, 35,000-foot view of how this process works.
Yep.
Having been on the planning board a year and a half, maybe two years, I think that we need to keep talking about the, that there are public comments available during the planning board meeting because what happens there, as we all know, but maybe the public doesn't know, is you get, you actually get a broader, a full, in-depth program of what's going on. And then, you know, have, then they can look at their, they can base their public comments on what they're hearing. So, you know, I really think we need to enforce that, you know, that's probably the best place to go. And it's still, you know, we still have to do what we have to do, but, you know. And the planning board is always on the same day of the month, every month. So, and if we get that information out early enough that says, okay, here's what we're going to be talking about from an agenda standpoint, maybe we streamline this whole process.
I totally agree. I think rather than coming into a public meeting, watch the developer going over his project. What Michael's suggesting is the developer's doing that, but at the same time, you got the committee members making comments on this. That would be probably the best place to attend.
And then to piggyback on that, just what we did today is that, you know, we had Evoque at Indian Trail. Let's make sure we publicize that because that's another area that they can give comments on, so.
Any other comments or suggestions?
Thank you.
So, council, we're tabling this for more data?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Brings us to the Monroe Road widening. Mr. Morse, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, just to give you guys a brief update, we had a meeting last Tuesday with, okay, let me back up. This is the night?
Yes.
Correct? On the second, we had, last Tuesday, the prior Tuesday was our council meeting. And we had DOT come in and give us all the reasons why we should pay the $10 million instead of not. And that was based on the letter that the town wrote, said there's not going to be $10 million, build the road. And so, they didn't receive that letter too well, but they were gracious enough to pull together a bunch of parties from DOT, CARPO. We had Union County Commissioner, we had other CARPO representatives from Stallings. We had the CARPO chairman, Michael Johnson, he, I call it Skyped in. And so, there was an offer put on the table, a couple of offers, and that's where we're at now. We are, DOT doesn't want us to take our money and go because quite frankly, they need the money to make the project happen. So, we met Tuesday. It was a very good conversation. It was fruitful. At this point in time, there are basically three offers on the table. And we're going to be discussing those, I believe, tonight in closed session. So, I can't go into too much detail, but next Wednesday is our CARPO meeting. And they would like an answer by then as far, as far as what our direction's going to be. So, we have some choices. We can contribute some money, can maybe contribute less money and contribute no money. And which those results will end up being, you could get a road built or you will get a road built, you might get a road built, don't count on getting a road built. And then, and then you start factoring in time. And if we don't get the road built, it's going to be a six-to-seven-year delay. We won't be driving on that till 20, probably close to 2030. So, anyways, we're going to be going into closed session, reviewing our options this evening, trying to come up with a consensus as to how we're going to approach CARPO and DOT. And hopefully, we'll have at the next council meeting some positive news, but I believe we'll have news one way or the other as the, what's going to happen with Monroe Road. I hate to leave it vague with you at this point, but I must, so. So, you all be careful on Monroe Road, as you heard Mr. Cobal, or Captain Cobal, speak about the gentleman that lost his life this past weekend. It's a dangerous road and I'm hopeful that we won't run into many more of those situations. So, right now, we have a couple of action items regarding Monroe Road. We have different representatives from council and staff will be meeting with different people in Charlotte and with DOT. And then we'll just let you know in a couple of weeks.
And I would just like to clarify that when the council, and if the council chooses to take an action, that will happen in open session.
Thank you. That brings us to economic development marketing campaign. Mr. Evans?
Good evening. On a much lighter note, I just want to give you a quick update on our economic development marketing campaign. Abby Ball, who is our new communications director, has taken the lead on this from her previous communications director, Mike Parks. And Abby is making tremendous headway. And we met with the agency marketing group last Tuesday, who's doing the marketing campaign for us. And we have about 98% of our content to the marketing group. And it's going to their, the person that puts the information together for our website. And the last meeting we had, they indicated that they will have probably a finished product by September 1st to the 15th in that neighborhood. I think you guys will be very pleased with this, something the town could be very proud of. And I'm excited to get the finished product so that I'll have a marketing tool to market the entire country to entice people to come to Indian Trail. If you guys have any questions at all?
No.
And Gary, we're still within budget too.
We are very much still within budget.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, guys.
Brings us to Town Hall Security. Captain Cobal, welcome back.
I'm going to cut this one down from five minutes down to two. So, Patrick put this on here, just mainly wanted to catch everybody up to speed on anybody that comes in to visit the Town Hall facility here. You'll notice some changes has been made. I know we've talked about them, you know, over and over in the past few months as we got the funding to do things and Patrick and Adam lined up the projects. But the new doors down front during the business hours and stuff really creates a lobby effect to where we can keep controlled access to the workspace for the employees in here. And so, thought that was a good thing that we worked on. And then we also inherited a building from previous town managers that had signed on contracts and stuff. So, there wasn't a whole lot that Adam or Patrick or even prior to Patrick, the other town manager could do with the freight train that was kind of rolling. So, when we got this building, we all kind of looked around and said, well, why is this like that? Why is this like that? And I kept calling Adam, saying, why is this over here? Why is that? So, we've gone back in now and Adam's really done a good job of going back through the site. And we've got the key card access is where we need them at. We've got, we had some places to where we walk around and scratch our head because without a key card, we could make our way through the entire building and go in corridors and hallways and things like that. So, just mainly wanted to catch you guys up that we had kind of tightened the buildup, so to say, on the building. Now that we've been in it for a while, we really wanted to be in it and settle in and let the employees decide how their workflow was going to kind of dictate what we needed to do from our end from a security aspect to come in and try to enhance, enhance what you had already. So, a lot of things that just kind of behind the scenes taking place, probably the biggest things that people notice is the glass doors out front. Any questions for Patrick or Adam on that? I'll be glad for them to answer them for you.
Thanks a lot. And I just want to let council know that whatever you tasked us with, the project is complete. And I appreciate you approving the funding for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Captain. That brings us to UDO update. Ms. Dees?
Good evening. Once again, and I'll take less than two minutes, hopefully. I'm excited to announce that planning staff has reviewed the draft Unified Development Ordinance. And as of this week, has handed it off to our town manager, Mr. Sedik, and to our town attorney, Ms. Walter, for the next level of review. We're hopeful to present the draft to council in a workshop format very soon. And we know that this project has been in progress for quite some time, so we're looking forward to its completion. Do you have any questions that I may answer for you?
I'm going to try to finish my part by midweek and hand it to Karen and Kevin and then we'll take it from there.
Karen, we'll get it next meeting?
If you want it.
It will cost me, right?
That's right.
So, how will that process be? Once you're finished and Patrick's finished, it goes to Karen. How long do you think that's going to be? A couple of months?
Oh, no, 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 no. I think we should probably, it's July, right? August, September, for sure, we'll be ready. Because I think once we all go through it, we're going to want to sit down together at the staff level and iron out any issues. I think we're going to all want to make sure we have a very sound understanding of the flowchart I was talking about and, you know, those kinds of visuals and what have you. So, we'll take a little bit of time to put that stuff together. And then we'll be coming in a workshop situation. And the plan has been historically to have Kevin come in and sort of do a, you know, do a little lesson for you all on the council role in the development process, which I think is hugely valuable. He's done it at other towns. And then work on getting this council a 350, or 35, I keep saying that today, I don't know why. I think I must be wanting to fly away somewhere, but at the 35,000-foot view of how the process here in town works, it should be obvious to everybody by the time we're done, so that's the goal. And then, once we go through it, you all can do picks and nits at it as well for council. We'll bring you the final copy and you can approve it. So, I imagine this will be done by the end of the year.
Well, is there a time period for the public to look at the UDO and to give their input as well?
We haven't, that happened at the very beginning of the process. So, there was lots of public input at the beginning. Now that we're getting down to the nitty-gritty, I think we're probably through that phase. Although if the councils would like to have a public input, a public hearing, which we'd have to have anyways, we're doing it. So, there will be a public hearing on the UDO. But if you would like more than that, just let us know and we'll figure out how to make that happen.
I just like to remind council that I think RACS did generate a large group of people from the community. I'm talking about probably 50 people that they put their input into the UDO. So, it's like Karen said, sort of like that process is completed, we don't want to go backwards. But a lot of input was taken, including the consultant that was working with RACS.
Any other questions? Thank you. Brings us to new business, planning board, Board of Adjustment. Mr. Gay?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Got a couple of openings on the planning board and have some recommendations for them. First of all, I'd like to thank Patrick for an excellent hire of Ms. Dees. Think she's going to do a great job. We have Michelle Reese, which I- We have Michelle Reese, which I think you all know, who has been an alternate and recommending that we move her up to a permanent position on the planning board. Also, Michael McCarver, originally, I believe, from, from Georgia, had moved here. He was on the planning board for a time in Matthews, also in Monroe. And was also on the Historic Commission in Monroe. And seems to be very knowledgeable. And I think that both these folks would do an excellent job in, in being fairly neutral, not, you know, not pro either direction, would want to do the best for planning for the town.
You have two openings, sir?
Excuse me?
You have two openings on your, on the board?
Two openings, and these would fill those two openings.
Who's, who's retiring from the board?
John Kilman and Jordan Noblen. They're, they're-
John and Jordan?
Yeah, their terms expired and they want to take a break.
And remind me, you have five members?
Five members. And we'll be dropping one alternate.
Don't you have an opening for one person then?
No, we, this will fill all of our openings. We have two openings.
I'm trying to convince somebody sitting very near you to fill an application.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
So you still have one as an alternate, and this will do the-
Well, we'll have one alternate. Now, I think that we had reduced to one alternate, alternate, hadn't we? Yeah, so this will fill us up at, at the time. You know, we, we have one attendance issue which may have to be addressed and that could possibly free up an opening, so.
Get her name and, and application.
Right.
So are we asking for an action here? Okay. Your two recommendations were-
Recommendation, Michelle Reese and Michael McCarver.
Counsel, if there's no discussion or any other recommendations, would you like to take a vote on these two? A motion?
Sure, making motion to approve. Michelle Reese and-
Michael McCarver.
Michael McCarver.
Mr. Head has made the motion to add both Ms. Reese and Mr. McCarver to the planning board in regular spots?
In regular-
Expiring when?
That would be immediately.
Now, when does it, when do they expire?
Two years time?
Two years?
Oh, it'll be a three-year term.
Three-year terms.
Three-year term.
Okay. All in, all in-
What is that, three-year term?
Three-year terms. Motion's been made, all in favor?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, motion approved. Thank you, Mr. Gay. Brings us, we're back to community meeting protocol, schedule and time incidents? Is that on there?
It's there twice, I think, for a reason, if, if I could take a stab at this one.
Okay.
The last community meeting we had, it kind of got, got out of order. We had a large number of people attending. And also, I would say the majority against the project, a few were in favor of the project. And what happened during that meeting is, it seemed like it was an organized meeting before these attendees came to the meeting. The developer was not given a chance to go over his project. Many people talking at the same time. They wouldn't allow the developer, any of his representative to respond to any of the questions. They continued to ask the same questions. That at least four of us were there. Brandy, myself, Tim, and Crystal. And it got to a point that all four of us, and, and it got to a point that we couldn't manage, you know, certain individuals. At the end of the meeting, we did, we did communicate that with, with, we talked a little bit about, to Chase about that. But we had some individuals that came in, one or two, that they had in mind just in a way that we felt that disrupted the meeting, to a point that they were talking about unrelated items. You know, so, in the future, what I'm trying to tell council here today, Steph and I, is if someone comes into a public meeting and he doesn't make any comments in regard to the project, and most of his discussion is unrelated to the project, does not ask permission to speak, he interrupts people, we're going to go ahead and take a break, ask the staff and the developer to take five minutes break and come back to the meeting, hoping that it will settle down. If it does, the same, we're going to have to ask the disturbance to leave the meeting. And if they don't, we have no choice but to ask Captain Chase to come and assist us to get the disturbance out of, out of the room. So it went out of order, it wasn't fair to the developer, it was not fair to staff, and it was not fair to the property owner, and it wasn't fair to the people that were favoring the project. At the end of the meeting, we got it done where each one asked a question at a time. We don't duplicate questions, we try to record separate questions so that we become more efficient and effective. So Brandy, myself, Tim, Captain Chase, we got together and we kind of created protocol just to protect the developer and the people that coming into the meeting and make sure that it's effective and efficient meeting. So if it gets to a point that someone going to come in here to disturb and campaign and say stuff that doesn't have anything to do with the project, we're going to ask him to leave.
So, are you looking for action from us in terms of, do we support this? I mean, it seems straightforward and it makes, it seems like common sense, really, a common sense approach.
Yeah, we, we just wanted to make sure that the staff and, and Union County Sheriff's Office got together. I just want to update you guys-
Okay, good.
That this is how we're going to handle an incident like that the next time it occurs.
Good.
And if you, if you have any issue or concerns, please let us know, because that's the, that's the, we're moving forward with that.
Even if somebody doesn't support a project, the developer and that person should be able to ask their question and should not have other people disrupting the meeting, being honest with you. Whether you agree or disagree, should be conducted with a certain matter of decorum and class, I mean.
I mean, it got to a point that the developer that was presenting was crying in the meeting to a point, and we cannot allow that. They, they need to be given the time, they're coming on their own, explain the projects, going over it. They weren't given the chance to do that. And as staff and people responsible for this building, we're not going to allow them to do that.
Yep.
Just, just an aside, there is, in any public meeting that's happening with this town, that is absolutely the course of action to take, is you give a warning and they're removed. Nobody has the right, everybody has the right to speak at a public hearing. Nobody has the right to be disruptive to the point where there's an imminent threat to the, to the meeting. So, just, that can happen in any public setting.
Thank you.
Patrick, have you, have, has the town considered just videotaping these meetings for, after, for, for a specific purpose? It's one thing to, you know, it's, he said, she said, kind of, but, and I was at that meeting, so, and you are being kind as, as the way you're framing this. But would it not serve everyone to, to videotape it?
We, we are, we are going to start doing that. We are going to put an iPad and a tripod, whatever it takes to record the meeting. We totally agree.
Because sometimes that's all it takes to keep somebody from showing out. And, but sometimes that gives them the reason to show out as well, but-
This is an excellent suggestion and we're moving forward with that.
Thank you. That brings us to agency donations. Are there representatives from these two organizations here? Council on Aging?
We thought you were the press.
Yeah, I did.
I saw you taking notes, I thought you were the press.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce myself as the Executive Director of Council on Aging in Union County. Despite my age, I've been put on this earth to advocate for our older neighbors. If you're not familiar with our organization, we are a nonprofit organization. We've been around since over 45 years. And our purpose is to help our older neighbors remain independent for as long as possible. Our mission has stayed the same for over 45 years, despite the fact that the number of people that we're serving has shifted significantly. If you didn't know this already, North Carolina is aging and it's aging rapidly. For the first time in our state's history, we now have more people over the age of 60 than under 18. So that means we have more older adults in our community than children in our schools and in daycares. And in Union County, we're not at that point yet, we are statewide, but we do in fact have over 40,000 people that are over the age of 60. So as you can imagine, the demands for our services continues to grow each year. We meet that need and that demand through several programs at our agency, so I just wanted to kind of list those to get you familiar with those. We have information in options counseling, where we connect seniors to resources that are important to them and to help them remain independent and in their homes for as long as possible. We do ship Medicare counseling, which is a program through the North Carolina Department of Insurance. Where we don't sell insurance, but we'll show you all of your options so you can make good informed decisions about your healthcare and, and your expenses. We have home safety repairs and, and yard work, volunteers that will come out and do those repairs and do yard work for our older neighbors. We have an equipment loan program where we give out durable medical equipment for those that can't afford it, including wheelchairs, walkers, shower chairs, things like that, that keep them safe in their home. We, last year, we gave out 495 pieces of equipment. We also give out incontinence supplies. We've given supplies to over 445 adults last year alone. And then we have a senior law project where we partner with Legal Aid of North Carolina to provide free legal services to our older neighbors. In addition to our options counseling programs, we have an in-home services program where we, where we provide assistance in the home once or twice a week for those that need help with personal care or household chores, and we do that at no cost. So those are the folks that don't qualify for Medicaid to pay for those services, but have a hard time paying a home care agency privately. We actually have a team of 12 in-home aides that help about 130 people on a regular basis in our county. In addition to that, we have a family caregiver support program, which is a program to help those family members that are caring for a loved one, particularly with a chronic illness, especially memory loss. We host support groups, we have family caregiver classes, obviously we offer supplies and equipment, and then we provide assistance to those grandparents that are raising grandchildren. In addition to that, we've just recently opened a next-door group respite program adjacent to our office, where it's a day program for people with memory loss. So those family caregivers that are caring for their loved ones can bring by their loved one for the day, will spend the day with them, do great meaningful activities, keep them busy, keep them having a good time, while their family members are able to go home and get a break, run some errands that are essential to them. Some of our family members that drop off their loved one just go home and take a nap because they've been up with their spouse all night. In addition to all of our programs, we offer many social opportunities, including some here in this building. We partner with your great parks and rec department, which I will say, you guys have an awesome parks and rec department. And you have beautiful parks. Sorry for that side note. But we also do day, day trips, we do monthly programs. We have a senior wellness expo, and then we do evidence-based health promotion classes, including a Matter of Balance, which is a balance class. We do a chronic, Living Healthy with Chronic Pain workshop, and also Living Healthy with Diabetes workshop, offered at no cost. So in closing, I know I have only three minutes, but I just really would like to thank the town of Indian Trail for allowing me to speak and allowing me to ask for your continued support for our agency. If you have any questions, I'll be here afterward, I'll be happy to talk with any of you. Thank you.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
You're asking for money, right? You want some financial support? What, how much are you asking for? Sorry.
Well, is, honestly, as, as much as you're willing to support our agency for?
That's a good answer, right?
The last time the town of Indian Trail have given us support, we've asked for $5,000. We were gratefully awarded $3,000 from Indian Trail, and that was two years ago.
All right. This is, this doesn't require an action tonight, so I guess we'll have to sort of discuss that. Okay.
Would it make sense to listen to the other presentation?
Yeah, that's why I said, yeah. Thank you for that. We just, I just wanted to kind of figure out what, where you will come in, and then-
I don't know if this is allowed, but this woman asked what we would use the money for. And this is not something we're proud of, but we do have a waiting list for our in-home services, where we have over 100 of our older neighbors that are on a waiting list, waiting to get the help. So unfortunately, we don't have enough funding to provide that, those, that service to all of our neighbors. So, we take down their name and information, and then as the funding allows, we provide an in-home aide that will go out to their house once or twice per week.
All right.
How many days do you use our facility here?
We, we don't do it on a regular basis, but we've, we've partnered a lot with Susan DDA, and we'll do sporadic programs here.
Thank you. And Ms. Lindberg, right?
Yes, Turning Point.
Actually, Ms. Lindberg is sixth on here for Governor Acrese, the community engagement manager.
Sure.
So again, my name is Renee Acrese, and I'm with Turning Point. If you're not familiar with Turning Point, we are the domestic violence shelter in Union County. We also have two other programs. We have the Sexual Assault Resource Center, which is a center that we have volunteers that go out into the hospitals to sit with victims of sexual assault. We also answer a 24-hour crisis line of sexual assault victims of children and adults. Then we also have our Children's Advocacy Center, which we call our Tree House, if you're familiar with that, where we see child victims of sexual assault. We provide them a forensic interview. We also provide them with a medical exam and any follow-up counseling that they may need. I do want to thank you for your continued support over the years, it's been very appreciative. I know that it is because of people like you that we're able to provide a safe and comfortable place for our families to heal. Please know you're truly making a difference in Union County with everything that you support us with, so we really appreciate that. I do want to give you a few statistics that are relevant to Indian Trail. These are just Indian Trail residents. So, in the past year, we have sheltered five women and two children from Indian Trail. We have also provided shelter services, or out-of-shelter services, for 19 women and 18 children. And what I mean by out-of-shelter services, we provide all the same free services to the people that might need us in the community that don't live with us, that maybe can't get away, that maybe don't have a safety plan and can't move into the shelter right away. And what I mean by that is we provide counseling, we provide children's programming, and we provide court advocacy to those people. And so that's what we have done with 19 women and 18 children. And then we've also taken 16 crisis calls in, from Indian Trail residents in the past year. So, I would just like to say that we would love for your support, your financial support again this year, as we have in the past.
Questions?
Do you have any questions?
When was the last time you received a donation from Indian Trail?
Last year.
What is the policy? Is it every year you can seek a donation, or do you have to wait for two years?
It's whatever council decides.
There's no steadfast rule?
I, I think, I will look it up, but from memory, I don't think you, you can get it every year, so we need to check on that.
You have to wait a year?
Right.
I didn't know that to be a rule, I know that was a guideline, but-
Yeah. Then I have, Mr. White? The ABC Board contributes donations as well. Can you tell me who you've donated to this last year, since you are a- Yes, sir?
Can you talk on the microphone?
You would think I would know that right off the, right off the top of my head, but I don't. We do, we contribute to three organizations, they're listed on our website. You're more than welcome to go out there and look and see exactly what we have distributed to those three organizations. But, right off the top of my head, I can't name them.
That's okay. I think I attended enough ABC Board meetings to know that Turning Point is one of the recipients. And I'm only mentioning that is if we have to make the choice and that there are dollars coming from the ABC Board that are funding Turning Point. I'm not aware of those same dollars funding the Council on the Aging, just some information.
Patrick, is this from-
I'm sorry?
Is this from this year's budget, or is this going back to the remaining funds from last year?
We, we did, we did have some remaining funds from last year.
But we're in a new fiscal year right now.
Right, and in addition to what council approves, we do have both of them together, combined.
So that means that that money from last year unused was carried over?
Yes, we, we rolled it.
Did we roll it over, Jim?
Negative.
You mean, that's, you mean, no, we didn't? So it's available? Yeah, but we had a thousand left from last year.
That's right.
So it's still available?
Yes, and turn-
What does that mean to you?
He was, he was falling asleep.
I, I, I'm sorry, I think I put Jim on the spot.
Sorry, Jim.
He's right in regard to the period, the fiscal year.
It has ended, I mean, but the books are closed then for the last fiscal year.
No, because we're on a quo basis, Mark, it's...
So...
July 1st, when the phone bill comes in for June, we're paying it in July, goes to the old year, so we're still...
So the account is meaning that we can actually do a journal to, to do that?
He's going to get that thousand.
I would say through the end of July, after July, I wouldn't allow it.
Good.
And it was two thousand seventeen's budget that Turning Point received the money? Or in two thousand nineteen? So they're up, it is the two years, just technically.
From looking at this, it doesn't look like we have to make a decision this evening. So, so two things. One, I want to thank both of you for what you do. It's, it's important, and what I'll tell you is, the council, we'll, we'll kind of talk amongst ourselves, and then we'll, we'll kind of tell you where we arrived, what decision we arrived. But I, I thank you for coming. I know it's kind of towards the end of the meeting. And again, on behalf of the council, I want to say thank you for what you guys do in our community. The, the shelter for the women, and also Council on Aging, I mean, those things are, I think, really important in our society, so thank you.
Just to follow up on that, I, I guess that, you know, maybe at the next meeting, can we get with ABC Board and find out what ABC Board has done? That'll, that'll help us make our...
Yeah, that'll give us some time, yeah.
Okay. All right, that brings us to the Resolution for Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Grant Initiative. Mr. Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you tonight for a resolution endorsing the Town of Indian Trail's request for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Grant Initiative Funds for the fall of 2019. This is a very competitive grant, and having the opportunity to be endorsed by the NPO will be helpful when we submit our application in August, so with your support, that would be great.
So we're asking council to endorse, so that way we could go ahead to the NPO and submit the application.
Does this need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make it. I'll make a motion to, let's see, approve a resolution endorsing the Town of Indian Trail's request for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Grant Initiative Funds?
Mr. Morris made the motion, all in favor. That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion passes. That brings us to Patrick. You have any updates, Patrick, you'd like to give at this time?
Yes, a few items. We, we're working heavily on communication. We started by putting the, all the developments that we have on our website. I'm not sure if Esther had gotten a chance to look at, or the rest of council. If you have any comments, please let us know. Brandy, right now in Abbey, they're working on the description of each development, number of units, where they're at, all that stuff. Also, we, we're going to work with Adam, with Solid Waste, Abbey and Adam, and maybe our Economic Development Coordinator, Mr. Evans, to kind of have whatever we need to send to, to the public. So, Michael, we put in the newsletter together, Solid Waste together, all that stuff. And also, we, we're talking to Abbott to see if there is some quick method on social media, that if we have any documentation, we could send it to HOA presidents that have emails and all that. So we're going to try to hit it from globally. That's, that's the main item that we're working on right now. As Gary Evans, we should be getting the Economic Development website soon. And sorry, this roundabout, we bid the project, it will not happen this year.
Kind of figured that.
Right, well, it's, it's sort of the process, the federal process, it takes three weeks for this, two weeks for that. So what we're going to do, play it safe, put the underground, hold the overhead, take care of the utilities this year, and come back next year, and have plenty of time to put the roundabout.
I saw some utility work being done. Are they not done?
Right.
Are they not complete? I mean, I go by there several times a day because I live over on that side. Mike, you do too as well. We, we've seen quite a bit of work done there.
Yes.
Are they complete with that work?
Not yet. I think we still have one company to relocate, right?
It's all private utilities right now, and then come back and do the public, the water and sewer.
Yeah, the water and sewer is not done yet.
Okay, so I have a question then. If the water and sewer is not done yet, that's probably going to be very big, right? Do they, do they plan to do that type of work this year?
This year.
Before school opens?
Yes.
Will be completed.
Yes.
Before school opens?
Yeah, we want to target it this year.
Second...
As soon as we get the bids from the contractor, we're going to get a contractor that does the initial work this year and also commit to the work next year.
Well, here's the question. This project was supposed to have been started or completed last year.
Right.
We're now into this year, so future value of money, or the cost of, you know, doing that. Are, are we looking at it being more costly next year, and if so, by how much? And if you don't have that answer, you could also send it in an email, but, because we, we're contributing a portion of that, right?
Right.
Or we're doing it upfront and then we build the state, that, that's how we're doing it? We're, we're getting some, we're putting some of our money upfront on that project.
Yes, we, we already done the real estate acquisition.
Right.
So we will continue putting our share.
But we have to pay some money towards the construction, the actual construction costs happening next year.
That is correct, yes.
And based on what we have in the budget for this year, when we anticipated doing it versus next year, do we expect those costs to be higher next year?
Absolutely. We should have enough money, local funds, to take care of what we're doing this year, but next year, definitely. Anytime you split a project and you have...
I agree. So my question is, seeing that you said absolutely, how much more than this year?
We, we, when we receive the bids, we could...
You let me know?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And then also, we're going to let North Carolina DOT know that, too.
Well, yeah, I think that would be good, if we can try and recoup that money from them. Because it's their delay, right?
We're not delaying the project.
Exactly.
Most of the delays coming from their side.
Our taxpayers shouldn't have to suffer for that.
That's right.
Will, will the renewed construction next year be after July 1st, or...
After, when school closes, until it opens, we got to get that project done.
Yep.
So I guess my question is, is the money that we budgeted towards that for this year, are we still planning on spending that for the roundabout? Or will we be looking at additional, additional monies next year?
Yeah, we, it, it depends on the bids. Let's wait and see how the project is bid. They're going to bid first phase and second phase, so that time increase is going to be included in the bid for this year and next year. That will tell us exactly how short we are and how short the state is, so that...
And then if, when the bids do come in higher, which I figure that's just what's going to happen, who picks up the difference? Who pays the difference?
Based on the contract, right now, the town picks up the over, the overage. And that's why Karen and I, we discussed it, that any future projects, we're not going to get into any projects where the state says the local municipality is going to take the overage. We're not delaying the project. We pushed it as hard as we can, but the federal process requires this and this and this, so without getting too deep into that, and we, as you know, we all inherited this project, too. So I don't think any of us, without picking on anybody, but we, we just inherited the project.
I'll, I'll ask Patrick to get me a copy of that, so we can, I'll just review it to see if there's anything we can do on that topic, because I have not seen that contract ever, so...
I mean, I mean, it's, it's needed there, and there's a lot of construction happening not too far from there, so it's really needed. Plus, a lot of people bypass the Walmart, turn over, over by the QT gas station and go up that street, so it's really well-traveled now.
All right. Anything else, Patrick?
That's the only item I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Council comments, Karen.
Mr. Hurd.
All right. I was thinking this week, when I was, when I was a manager, the thing that I'd always liked to see was not see anything. And by that, I mean, for example, the parade. Hayden, I saw you at the beginning, didn't see you again. It ran smooth, so that tells me you had a good plan, you had everybody working the right way, and it went smooth. Chase, same for your detail. Saw you actually glad-handing a couple of people, which is perfect. It went smooth. To me, you don't have to be in front. You, you make a plan, you work the plan, and then the, at the end, you see where you're at. And again, I, I see a lot more of this going on all throughout staff, and I definitely appreciate that. Appreciate the work that David and Jerry did on the Monroe widening. We still got a ways to go, but, you know, we're progressing. Mr. Evans, thank you for all that you're doing. I'm glad to see that we're finally getting Town Hall security, something I've been asking for, for a long time, and looking forward to the new UDO. I also thank everybody that came. This was a, a, a good crowd tonight, a rather large crowd, and we appreciate that. Thanks to everyone, and please drive safely going home.
Ms. Howe.
It was a good meeting, thank you. And the parade was great. That, you've got a calling for getting people organized, you really do, but we're real proud of what you did. And it was a little warm. The palette was very hard. Just thought I'd put a complaint in for next year, okay? But it was, it was a nice parade, and it, it's just fun. And your, your grandchildren, two little boys, just the cutest can be, they got that candy, and they had more scooped in their hand than me, and they were throwing it over you.
I'm afraid that, you know, you said, "Don't throw it," but, man, they were, they were doing, but they couldn't get far enough that it hit anybody.
That was just real nice to watch them.
Had a good time.
Yeah, we did. And again, the, the staff always does a great job. I've given someone a little present to do something with an, an article that I, an item that I gave them. We'll see what happens. He's going to bring it to the Christmas party, just to give you a little, a little insight on that. The meeting was great. It's just, election's going to be coming up again, and I'm going to mention something. It's nonpartisan, and I wish people will remember that. That's very, very important. But that's all I have to say, but it gave you some clues about what I was thinking about. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre.
Oh, thank you. Mrs. Dees, welcome to the town. Last time you were here, I was not here, so didn't get a chance to meet you. I did get to meet our communications person, so that was good, but welcome, hopefully you'll like it, and they'll treat you nice. I'm sure they will. To everybody who's here this evening, thank you very much. Patrick, you and your staff, Adam, Dalton, everybody, Jim, you, just everybody, you guys do a really good job. Appreciate all that you do. You, you do it very well. Thank you for coming this evening, and get home safe.
Mayor Alvaro.
As everyone else said, Hayden, great job, putting it together and all involved in, in helping your parade was great. Chase, thanks for all you've done and for continuing to keep the town safe. A lot of times during these events, we don't realize there's other things going on in town that require your attention. Thanks, thanks for that. Hayden, I'm no expert on this, but it was kind of warm out. Maybe for future Fourth of July parades, we don't throw chocolate?
Or change it till September.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it was like throwing milk and... Trying to go through it, yes. And the only thing I'll do, sometimes you pick your battles with your children, they know it all, until they end up at a Fourth of July parade with a mild case of heat stroke. Now she realizes, thanks to the EMTs and everyone that took care of her, and since she obviously knew it all, she needed their assistance. But she's doing, doing well. She's a good kid. Council, great job. It's an honor working with you. Patrick, you've raised the bar for not only this town, but all surrounding towns, as far as I'm concerned for town managers. Everyone that came, thank you for coming. Have a safe trip and God bless.
Mr. Morris.
Get out of here without doing this. Well, thank you, everyone. Mr. Hollander, thank you for reaching out with, with your suggestions and your concerns about the parking. I, I, as I had told you, I drove over there, and it was an obstacle course. I was just, I was amazed. And I, I, I appreciate you bringing that to the town's attention, because there's always an opportunity to do better and be better. Ms. Fielding, please consider the planning board if it does, that spot opens up, because I think you would be a, a, a real asset to it. And thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I see a couple of faces. It is the election season coming, and there, there are a couple of folks in the audience that, that are vying to be on this council, and I wish y'all great success, and, and thank you for wanting to step up and, and serve our community, because I think that's what we should all do at some point in our lives, is to serve each other. And with that, God bless you, and have a good night.
Okay, that brings us to closed session. NCGS 14331811, let's consult with attorney, protect attorney-client privilege.
Ms. Fielding?
And in regards to NCGS 8143318, Economic Development.
Yes, sir.
I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Morris made the motion, all in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous. We'll take a four-minute...
You ready, Matt?
You're good.
Okay, I want to make a motion?
I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McIntyre made the motion, all in favor. It's unanimous. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Mr. McIntyre made that motion also. All in favor, it's unanimous.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, sir. Have a very good evening.